Your chance to go up. Give you an argument, then you come up. Don't you let him leave.
Okay, I got it. I'm the boss. You didn't know that? He don't work no more, he's three in line, he said Tom would eat.
All right, George, you start the thing.
See, I wish you just gonna fill this.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get sorry like officially called or ordered last thing in this business session for two dollars fifteen twenty twenty three order. And that's protocol.
Mary Iper.
Here.
Wes Rich.
Here.
Shannon Pennington.
Here.
We have a Ken.
Here.
Brian Adams.
Here.
Neil Clouse.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Here.
Do you want, uh, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, if you want to take just a few minutes, we do have a new member, we'll get it on the record, recognize him, Brian, if you want to tell us who you are, a little bit about yourself, and like you've already met everybody, but.
Yep, I'm just surviving, but I'm Brian Adams, I've been in the construction business for twenty years, I'm DKU graduate, grown up here in Richmond. And, uh, got two, two kids and a wife, been married for twenty eight years.
Well, we're glad to have you, and Brian's gonna be, right, we'll be filling in, uh, the remainder of Neil's term, and then we'll see what happens from there. Um, uh, before we go forward, we do need to amend the agenda too. Uh, item number five, uh, had to be pulled, the attorney representing that applicant was not available tonight. So that will come back on a, uh, a future agenda.
Yeah.
We can bring that back.
Okay.
Our next rule business is approval of the minutes. Everyone should receive a copy of the minutes in their packet.
Recording in progress.
For, um, June the twentieth, twenty twenty three. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes received?
I move the TV down.
Okay, I'll move it down, that's second. Any further discussion? Not available.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Doug Rich.
Yes.
Mary Iper.
Yes.
We have a Ken.
Yes.
Brian Adams.
Yes.
Neil Clouse.
Yes.
Robert Clark.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is a preliminary practice extension for the go run. Working with Charles School Personal Management.
Uh, so yeah, Jim brings, Jim calls the developer in to go run. He brings us to his, brings us to his area here, he has a preliminary plat that was approved. Probably before this. Before you all, yeah. And he just wants to, uh, to extend that preliminary plat, so he doesn't have to go, uh, through all that process again, he's about, he's about done it there. Um, if you can see, he's got, uh, eleven of nineteen lots in phase seven, uh, and then in the last phase would be eight lots, so he's, he's about to wrap it up, and anybody that's driven out there knows that's, uh, he does a good job of this development, and he just requested an extension on that point.
Okay, I'll report for motion.
I make a motion if we approve the plat extension for the go runs.
They have a motion to approve the plat extension for the go runs, or a second motion. I'll say. I'll vote for the second, any further discussion? Is not available.
Neil Clouse.
Yes.
Brian Adams.
Yes.
We have a Ken.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Doug Rich.
Yes.
Mary Iper.
Yes.
Robert Clark.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is adoption of the land use subdivision regulations for our turn, this portion over here.
Yes, it did not for me, because I've been working on this for thirty years, probably. If you go back to, to when we started on the comp plan, I was there a couple, uh, I think it was a year or so to get done and adopted, and then, uh, we started on the land use regulations and the subdivision regulations, which we combined into the document that you all had a copy of in your packet. We should have represented from, uh, TS seventy, who was the organizational group that, that helped us with the comp plan, and then helped us with the, the rewrites of these regs, but, uh, I'm sure nobody got it covered or covered, uh, I have, uh, certainly if you'd have any typographical or substantive, uh, concerns or issues with it, uh, it's not a matter of me to, to know about that, uh, but I would say there's a lot of work done in this document, um, of the means, uh, we had a steering committee, uh, there was a layup, uh, Robert was on the committee, fire chief was on the committee, uh, an S K surveyor was on the committee, uh, there was Taylor was on the committee, there's an helper, Robert Locker, who's developed, developed a few subdivisions here in the county. So there, uh, that's a professor up in Eastern. Very well rounded, uh, group of people from different aspects of the, the development realm, uh, and kind of got, took input from all those people. Uh, a couple of sections were deep dive rewrites, uh, like the use categories and, and the types of uses and that kind of thing. Um, so the, some of the stuff, some of y'all have been a part of updating over the last year or so, couple of years, like the, the bonding guarantees and the road design characteristics, and, and some of those things were just kind of cleaned up, uh, for ease and technical, being able to read it, just, just cleaned it up and organized it in a much better way than it was, the doc, the document that we use now. It's faster, and it's, uh, very difficult to read, it's not very user friendly at all. Uh, I, I really believe that this new document, um, is, is much more user friendly for the, for the layperson that doesn't really understand much about development regulations, they can get on there and, you know, and can say, all right, I understand property, this is what it zones, what can I do? It's really hard to do in the current document. It's much easier if you look through here and, and look at some of the charts and the, and the way it's laid out, uh, there's pictures, there's colored photographs, there's diagrams that show you how to do things, so, uh, I'm very excited about it, uh, George, have we got her up?
She is, um, Nicole, uh, my first recording up here, except my projector, I hope you'll be able to hear her.
Okay, Amy, are you there?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Did you, so you made it go through the whole spiel, you were listening the whole time?
I was waiting for you, but you were on a roll and just.
Well, I was just kind of vamping, waiting for George to get you up on the screen, and, and there you are.
I just, uh, I, I think, I could see the screen off though, so.
Well, can you turn it around a little?
There was a lot of work that went into it, and again, don't think it was a rewrite of intent, but it was definitely a rewrite of usability and user friendliness of that, that document as well.
Amy, tell us, tell, tell them who you are and who you're with, and, and, and like you said, how, anything that I, I didn't cover, I mean, I think I.
Sure. Yeah, 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 definitely happy to do that, uh, so, uh, Amy Williams with Taylor C. Per Williams Design Group, sorry, I'm not there in person tonight, um, when we had, when the meeting date just got set, I already had another public hearing this evening, um, so, kind of bouncing between two at the moment, but, uh, I am a community planner, lease planner, I focus in long range planning, like comprehensive plans, and then also zoning and subdivision. Um, not just we, not just writing those ordinances, but we also administer those ordinances for local governments as staff as well, so get kind of all of those various perspectives, um. And then as I said on the plane, which is just like you guys, so, um, various influences that kind of really, um, lead and kind of guide your ordinances for sure. Um, we were also the ones that, that worked through your comprehensive plan, um, you know, that was probably adopted, we put it out a year and a half ago, um, and we've done a lot of work, even just in Madison County, we've done, um, Richmond's comprehensive plan as well as Berida's, um, as well just within Madison County, and so, um, again, as, as Bart kind of said, that we had a technical committee that had already those kind of different views and, and, and thoughts in terms of which direction, uh, various regulations should go, so it wasn't just a one sided kind of, uh, conversation. And really focused on taking the good parts, as he mentioned, you just re, gone through some of those various things, like your road standards and those six of things, taking those principles, keep those, um, and then really brought some other sections more up to date, um, in terms of, he mentioned your use tables, it's, uh, instead of sitting there saying dressmakers and, uh, you know, shoe repair, to kind of modernize those and, and breadth and those out to in, in an effective way, um, and then really, as he mentioned, um, two of our big missions in that were making it much more user friendly. And so we've got a lot of charts and tables, as she looked through that, versus just all text, um, but then also we have a lot of those kind of sketches and little diagrams, uh, throughout there to explain concepts, so, again, my goal is, is, um, on, on, on some basis zoning sections, more so than subdivision, I like to really hand that to the average person, and they just go to say, okay, I've zoned this, this is what I can do with my property, or at least for a, a larger sense, build a grass that, um, and so I think we've done that, and then the other was really just organization of the document overall. Um, you had processes kind of sprinkled throughout the entire thing, um, you had regulations kind of sprinkled throughout the entire thing, uh, you had some that didn't really coordinate back that you were conflicting, um, so bringing all of that into one document really helps to, uh, not just organize it, make it easier to find things, but also make sure that they relate to each other better as well, so.
Yeah, maybe.
That was kind of a push here, I know you didn't want me to make, but, um.
This document, uh, probably not, other than the, uh, you know, the, the cut paste and, and smaller updates that we made here and there, it might have been redone in probably forty years. So when she talks about dressmakers and shoe, shoe collars and that kind of thing, there's some legitimacy there, I mean, there's, uh, there, there's, there's so many new types of issues and stuff that can be done now that people didn't even think about twenty years ago, so it's a long overdue update, we think we've, we brought it up into, uh, much more currency than it, than it was, and again, I'm excited to be done with it and move on, we, we expect, um, development is already going well in the county, as you all know. I mean, we expect that to, to continue and even grow with, uh, the development of the ninety five interchange, we always said when that new bridge got done, and that road got fixed, that, that, development would, would grow out there, and we're already seeing that, and I get calls regularly from people inquiring about that property. Um, same thing, we talked about some of the property out around the ninety seven, um, we have silver in that area, so, I'm glad to have this done before that gets too much into effect. I mean, we have a better document that, that property owners and, and developers can, can rely to, to develop their property.
Just to make a comment, as being one of the committee members, uh, we also took into consideration, uh, zoning for the city of Richmond and city of Berea, where we were close to our zoning, that, that their zoning, sort of being, trying to be in consistency because of that.
Yes.
And that'll.
Yeah.
Brad had a question, uh, this will be online, obviously, on county's website for advocacy. Looking at a format that if someone was looking at, they could do a keyword search, like if they want to put the word density in, and see all the places in the, uh, regs that.
I'm not a technical IT guy, but I think that's possible, uh, that can be scanned in.
Yeah, it was a versatile PDF.
Oh, it is, okay, yeah.
So.
That is a good recipe, I can quite appear, but, um, yeah, that's one of my key things when I'm administering the code, it's like control F, and I need to be able to find everywhere that they say, you know, um, you know, latest keyword or something of that nature, so yeah, it is definitely searchable, and then it's also hyperlinked throughout too.
Amy will be online, uh, it's on there now, as, as part of this adoption process, so it'll be online, just like our current one is for people to, and we, we got a new website that's going live. This is live? If it's not live already, it's, it's going live very soon, we're all, that's been updated, so, there's a lot, a lot of good things going on.
Yeah, we want to ban it in the long run too, for you guys as, um, not a big proponent, as far as I sit on that side of the table too, uh, um, we don't give you a locked down PDF or anything like that. You guys get all the Word files, you get all those source files, so that when there is them in it, because there will be, you know, I mean, there should be, you should be reassessing your code annually, just to say, what tweaks do we need, it's not a full rewrite, but it's maybe a tweak here or there, but you have those actual Word files, so that you can make the limits in the file, that's where it looks consistent and everything still functions, you can repeat PDF it, and then put it back online with a, you know, a, along with what you amended, but.
Yeah, I suspect, I suspect that it's probably normal, especially with a document this large, that at some point in the near future, somebody will say, why did y'all do that? And we'll be like, I don't know why we did that, but, but what our point is, that kind of thing will be much more easily fixable now, because we can just cut out a mistake and, and fix it, send it to the court with an ordinance update, and should, should be much smoother process because of the way it's developed.
This will be form of a recommendation.
This is just like a zone change, y'all make a recommendation to the fiscal court, uh, to approve this document, uh, it'll have two, two reads, just like any old, any other orders, um, that the court, uh, approved or denied, and once they approve, it, it assumes it goes into effect immediately. Yeah, on, on adoption of the ordinance by fiscal court, yeah. So I'm hoping to get it on, uh, as soon as the next meeting arrives, we can bang out an ordinance pretty quick to, to, uh, to adopt it, and, and then, uh, we'll have a, we'll have a public, kind of, with you all, with the fiscal court, and hopefully Amy can join us for that, to answer any questions that the, uh, that fiscal court might have, like I said, right, Amy was part of that committee, but I'm sure the other, uh, magistrates might have some questions about our things, and we'll try to answer those as we present it to them.
Corey Isaac.
Do you all have any, any, any content or, or typographical type, certain questions that you want to ask Amy or me while we got her here? She's got a lot of Amy to go to, and we got, got her for a few minutes.
Has it changed any since the last, first time that we got it and read it then? Is this draft different than?
I don't think it is.
Then what we had it like?
Is she ready for?
First, yeah.
Is she ready?
Yeah.
All right.
We, we all.
All right, I want to put you on the road.
We had it for a week till it changed.
If something changed, if this, if something changed, it was, it was something very mild.
I'll say one thing, it's a hard thing.
Right.
It's harder to walk when you pass it forward.
A lot easier.
Very much better organized.
And there were places in that, in that, because that was two documents, right, we had the land use regulation, and then we had subdivision regulations, and there were places where those two documents contradicted each other, or overlapped, or was redundant, or whatever the case may be, and early on in the process, Amy was, she's like, would you, would you consider consolidating that into, to one larger document, I'm like, please, let's do it.
We simply had to read it all, wouldn't be able to find anything, if you didn't, you couldn't search for anything.
That's right, if you didn't really know a general area where you needed to be looking, uh, then you were.
This year, this year, hard thing.
Was it inconsistency of the memory, I, I remember we changed some of the, some of the memory system was all cut.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's kind of what she's talking about, when we did make a change, sometimes things would just get inserted in there just randomly, out of order, and not, not in flow, the proper flow of, uh, that the document should have been going in, and we're like, why is he talking about landscaping here, where there's talking about setbacks over here, why, it just, there was not really, because it was just a hodgepodge of twenty years worth of trying to get what we needed into, into the document.
There are lands with bandings put on there and some of that, I wrote it five times, I'm still, I'm trying to figure out exactly what this is trying to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, since this is a public meeting, I need to ask, is anyone in the audit chair to, uh, having a question about this, uh, uh, land development subdivision regulation? Thank you. I asked for a record, that I did ask the audience if there's.
Right.
Anyone here interested in that? Okay, is there any other question or comments? If there's nothing, I'll floor for a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the new revision of the land use subdivision regulations.
And again, this will be a recommendation that we adopt, and the fiscal court will adopt, but, uh, I know what you mean, it's Shannon Pennington.
And I'd like to add too, that if there's any amendments or anything you've got to do, you know, we'll give it to the magistrate if that.
Yeah, you, you okay with making that part of your motion too?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that, there, you know, if there was a typo or something that I, that I needed to correct or something between now and then, I hope you're all okay to be doing that while presenting the call.
You have that motion, was it, was that suggestions or second to the motion? That motion's second, in both discussions. Not available.
Neil Clouse.
Yes.
Brian Adams.
Yes.
We have a Ken.
Yes.
Mary Iper.
Yes.
Wes Rich.
Yes.
Shannon Pennington.
Yes.
Robert Clark.
Yes.
Amy, thank you so much for everything, we're not done yet, we're, we'll set it positive if we are, um, but I'll be in touch in the next couple of days, and we'll come up with our plan going forward.
I think that would be what they, might think that they, thank you guys so much, and, uh, thank you to everyone who's put time into this, it's been a, it's been a good, but fun.
All right, George, if you want, if you want to cut her a little, we'll move on to the next.
Next on our agenda is, uh, zone change four seventy nine Mount Vernon Road, Dr. Kentucky.
Give me just a second, I don't need my key, more so I get the, get my hands on the.
Please let your magnetic address for the right.
Mister Chairman, thank you, this is an application, uh, typically that you would not see from my office. My name's Corey Isaac's, Isaac's office, three oh six West Main Street, Richmond, Kentucky, entering my appearance on behalf of the applicant, Mr. James Luxford. Mister Luxford had filed a petition prior to acquiring my services, which is the reason why it appears the way it does typically, um, my applications look a little different. Uh, however, I did come in after the application had been filed, there, and Mister Thomas, you called before the, before the panel, one adding this, is it proper to call both addresses, uh, for the economy of, of, of town? There are two questions for this, this board today, the thirteen twenty eight Slate Creek and four seventy nine Mount Vernon Road, they're all.
Do I think we need to, we need to do these separately, right, because they're two different?
Yeah, I, I don't, you're gonna have to have separate motion, separate findings and facts, uh, I don't, I, I think just to keep it existed probably better, even though it was safer.
Mister Thomas, which one do you wish to call first?
Well, let's go on ahead, let's see what.
This is four seventy nine.
Okay, four seventy nine Mount Vernon Road is.
Mister Thomas, if you can, highlight.
Yeah, I'm trying to get that, come up right now. So this, this lot right here on the corner, this is Slate Creek Road, this is, uh, Mount Vernon Road, Berea, check this way, it's just like the bottom of the corner, Slate Creek and and Mount Vernon. Just over there, I believe.
Correct, um, I'll make a proffer, then I'll call my clients by testimony, uh, this area complies with every requirement for general commercial upon an urban corridor, lays upon an urban corridor, uh, over the past years, i- it's, it's been used in different ways, none of them have been used, uh, and to the purpose of res, primary residential. It's been a lot where they sold some vehicles, they parked some vehicles for commercial purposes, they sold some buildings for commercial purposes. Uh, this lot, I, I, I would go so far to say is, within any recent history, has only been used for a commercial purpose. Ultimately, my client did, uh, request an address for the property, which then triggered the issue that the property is not zoned for commercial purpose. Up until my, my quest for an address, this would not be an issue, because nobody would have known anything till wiser. Uh, it has been used for a commercial purpose, not ever been used for residential purpose, it does lie upon a corridor, it, it does provide access, uh, off auxiliary roads, which the comprehensive plan does instruct for commercial usages, its use and continued use as commercial property will not affect any of the private residences around it. It hasn't affected them up until this point, I, I can't imagine how it would affect them going forward. Uh, at this point, I would call, uh, Mister James Luxford, Mister Luxford, do you want to call it up? Please.
Mister Lawrence, you please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but truth.
Uh, Mister Luxford, I may need you to speak up, okay?
Okay.
That means now, you gotta speak up now, you're, yeah. Do you own the property at four seventy nine, nine, Mount Vernon Road?
Uh, I guess that's a number that was assigned to it, yes.
So, and it's the property that's depicted, m- Mister Thomas, if you would help me here, where the cursor's moving back and forth, that's your, that's your lot, that's one of them, correct? How long have you owned that property?
Uh, probably twenty five or thirty years.
And since you own the property, there's never been a single family residence on that property, correct?
Never.
You've only used that property for commercial purposes?
Right.
Now, it has access off Slate Road and Mount Vernon Road, correct?
Right.
Which means that you do not have to enter that property from Mount Vernon Road, you're allowed to come in off Slate Road, which gives an auxiliary entrance to this property for a commercial purpose.
Right.
Right? You believe that the current zone is inappropriate, given the nature of the property, its continued use over the last twenty five, thirty years, you wish to request a general commercial zoning to allow you to have the same continued use as you've had over the last twenty five to thirty years.
That's right.
Now, in, in this scenario, it's your belief that it meets the size requirement for general commercial, correct?
Yes.
It has multiple entrances for egress, correct?
Right.
There's not any portion of the property which would change the nature or character of the property in regards to the, any of the lots surrounding it.
That's right.
Now, you own a couple of those lots surrounding it, correct?
I own one.
One of them, okay, now, the current use, in your opinion, will not change in any regard.
Right.
And it's also your opinion that this is in line, in line with the comprehensive plan for the preservation of commercial property and growth within the county.
Yes.
I think that's all the questions and all the testimony that I wish to have, other than, you do, you have filed an application here, right?
Right.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll point, um, the commission to page two of the application, that the proposed land map is in agreement with the comprehensive plan, and that the comprehensive plan promotes growth, the progress, property is within an urban corridor, that is correct by your testimony.
Yes.
And that it will promote and strengthen growth in this area of the county.
Yes.
Also, it's always been used commercial, it's been listed as commercial, it's not been hidden, what triggered this was you asked for an address, so this is all your fault.
That's right. If you have any further questions.
Please.
Uh, how, Mister, Mister Luxford, how's the property being used right now? I mean. How's it being used right, right now, what's, what's happening on that property, is there, is there a business on it, is there a structure on it, to see anything being used? Well, how it's been used, uh, I, there's other businesses around there, and, uh, they need additional parking. Quite, you know, three or four times a week, sometimes every day. So it's been used for park, parking right now? Uh, it's, right, right. Okay.
Used for parking for other businesses within the area.
That's right. And, and the properties that are contiguous to it, that are next to this property, what kind of property, how are they being used, are they, are they, are they businesses, or are they residences? There's exercise places, there's, uh, uh, Apple Lay, I don't know his name, it's Appalachian Mission of the whole, where they sell all kinds of clothing for poor people. Every ninety dollar, and stuff like that. So the properties next to it are used, used as businesses, somewhat shit out of the zone, you, you could say that, but they're used as businesses, is that correct? And that's what I would understand.
I think that's all the testimony I, I would list in reference to this property, I would ask that, uh, there be a motion, uh, to adopt the, the zone change, as the property has continues uh, to other general commercials, it complies with the comprehensive plan, its use historically has been commercial, and it will not, uh, interject or cause any issue with other zones within the area.
Is there anyone else missing, having a comment or a concern?
What questions? Hold that for us.
Didn't have one.
Didn't have an address.
She didn't, and, and that's what triggered, that's why we're here today, is because we, we asked for an address, and then once we asked for the address, and then zoning, zoning became an issue as well, uh, we should have kept our mouth shut and just kept all getting on, and we've never been here today, however. Because.
A contradiction.
Because we, because, because, Thomas, uh, Thomas, a great lesson, uh, we did ask for an address, uh, now that we have an address, the question, it's appropriate, uh, to go before you and ask that it be zoned the same way that its use has been used.
Let me say this, I, I know Mister Luxford for, uh, since he moved back to Berea, it's been two or five years. Uh, I worked with closely when I was doing rest energy, um, he actually bought that last village, which is all the way right here, and it was in pretty bad state of, of being trashed and everything done, he bought that, and actually made that into something nice, and got some nice fences in and out. He bought that and actually made that into something nice and got some nice fences in and out. This uh, this area right here is like a, a trailer park, one that we inherited from before we were paying in development. And he went in and black topped all that, and I think, didn't he put sewer in there?
I did.
Yeah, so uh, he's, he's um, quite extraordinary with that construction.
Bert, would you turn the zone on just for a quick?
Yeah, that's what was on a minute ago, the yellow and the red. Yeah, so, all this red is general commercial, all the yellow is residential. This is the lot, uh, I just need a question, currently it's residential.
So it is corrected?
Is it, is it roten there?
Yes.
That's the roten.
So I don't give the auxiliary entrance, especially across the street from a general commercial.
Would it be, would you classify it as a non-performing use if it was not re-zoned? I mean, a type that.
It's not really used being used on it right now. It may have historically hit me as been used for something other residential, but I wouldn't say there's a quote-unquote business, active business on it at this time.
But it sure hasn't been residential.
Exactly. That is accurate.
Never. I would ask uh, for a motion be made.
Yeah, it was also been, uh, sewers been added in, this is Mr. Luxford.
Mr. Luxford, install.
So that's been a whole gray from what it was.
Have all the sewers available on that lot or not?
Well, it's, it's, it was on twenty-five.
Yeah, Bert does a little bit different rules. Or they used to, I guess maybe when Eagle Point San Vision was developed, that's in the county, but it has some Beretta City sewer, these properties that you're talking about here. I don't know if that's still the case, if you can, if you can tie on to that sewer uh, without being annexed, like you have to do in Richmond in most cases. Um, I don't know the answer to that, but we don't have, we don't have sewer requirement for our general commercial.
I guess there's no development needs.
That would require that, yes, yeah.
He also inserted in his application, uh, the fact, may storage units, that what he wanted to use for? Any other storage units?
That, that was, that was his concept. Uh, so our application required a concept to give you an idea of a, of a possible or potential use, or if, if you know what you're gonna do with it, uh, a render of what that might look out, look like. That's why he added that in there to kind of just give the commissioner an idea of what it could potentially look like. That was at my request, yeah.
You understand too, with, with the zone change, there may be some other parts need to be put on the block, like a buffer zone, that kind of stuff.
When you start, when you go to developing, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly understand that a- as we move forward, however, we've just got an address and we need to correct a zone and we're, we're, we're not looking at step two. Looking at step one. Uh, and and once we look at step two, we'll certainly go through the correct procedure. We'll, we'll provide every plan that's necessary. But right now, we, we can't, uh, we've got more than we wanted to buy off.
I have another question.
Please.
If uh, within uh, say a year or so, somebody comes in there and wanted to build a house, would you all be coming back and changing that thing? And that, that would be fine to do in short here.
If we changed it to commercial, they could not build a house on it, they'd have to come back and change it.
Have to come back and do that, yeah. Probably just, they'd come over and just say yes to that question.
We would, we would have to come back and we would gladly come back.
Any other questions?
And we're wanting U C four, right?
Is anyone in the audience here, not to address this, glad you're here, James?
Me.
Yes, ma'am, just plug a phone. Sit right over there, Mr. Luxford.
Go ahead.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but truth. Just raise your right hand, add your store.
Uh, my name is Vaughn DeBratcher. I live across the road from this. I live at four fifty-six Mount Vernon Road, that's where I live. Well, my concern is, I'll just go ahead and tell you, I've known Jimmy all my life, okay? Ever since I can remember, it's nothing personal, but, but that land over there, or whatever, it's, you know, people like Jimmy does own the exercise place and he owns the mission. Well, they have to park over there, or whatever. There's no entrance, there's no exit, the speed limit down there is fifty-five. When I pull out of my driveway, I have to look behind me, up and down the road, it's, it's dangerous. Yeah, the, the, the speed limit needs to be changed, there needs to be an entrance or exit, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. And then also, I mean, I find Jimmy's always had buildings over there, and I don't see nothing wrong with that, selling them. But I also don't wanna see a liquor store or something come in, so if you all approve this later on, they can put anything they want in there, I think, can't they?
They gotta come back in with side of the law plan.
It did have to be within the.
It has to be sewers listed.
What was allowed in that district. I'll let the commission know, I did get another phone call, about the same issue, about the, about the entrance. So that, that property is level with, with Mount Vernon Road.
That property is.
Pull in and out of, of it from anywhere on Mount Vernon Road. So any site development plan that was presented would be required to have a dedicated entrance, whether it be on Slate Creek, I don't know if the State Highway Department would give them an entrance off Mount Vernon Road or not, but, but there would be a, a dedicated entrance just for this lot, if he comes back with a site development plan of any kind.
Well, this property, I would, like I said, I've lived down there all my life. It used to be just two white houses. Jimmy bought that property, okay, he did, you're right. Is what he done when he bought that, he uh, he had dirt hauled in there. There's no coverage or anything on the other side of the road for drainage and all that stuff. And you're just, he did have the trailer park, he did the trailer park, he did the sewer, but the sewer's on the backside. Now, any, anybody else on twenty-five can't get on it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't know, it don't benefit nobody, or it don't benefit nobody on my side, which I'm fine. We've got seventy tanks and stuff, we're fine. But, I mean, I don't know who else it would benefit, you know? I mean, it does benefit all that over there on the other side, but he developed it, you know? Like I said, it used to be just two houses in the land, that's all it used to be, that's the reason why it's residential. That's the reason why it's zoned the way it's zoned. You say, he has put a lot of work into that over there. But, you know, like, it is very dangerous, there's a curve right up the road, but you can't see it in that picture. When they come around that curve, you know, they're doing fifty-five, somebody's got on their turn signal, leaving coming in Slate Creek, or even the businesses on down. You're, I don't know how many people, well, I think down there at Eagle's Point, there was a tally already at the, the beginning of this year. And then, I don't know how many people's got hit in the back end. And my brother's one of them, and I've even got hit in the back end on down road, not right there in that area. I mean, it is dangerous, it really is, and y'all are getting ready, which, I like I said, I found Jimmy selling buildings or whatever over there, but I am worried about what might happen tomorrow or the next day. You know, I mean, I don't know, whenever y'all change this, I mean, I don't know what is be allowed to come in and what won't. And it don't seem like nobody cares about the speed limit, or people that do live down there. If you go to the other end of Beria, which we're in the county, the speed limit's different down there. We're through a drug, and, and there's houses down there too, it's not that high. But where we live, it's high, and it's very dangerous, and that road is traveled a lot. Like I said, this ain't personal, I would say I liked him, I always have. He might like me after today, but whatever.
But, do I ask for? But uh, with your concern on the entry, and I did go by there, what it is, you can't get in, or pull into it anywhere down through the law. The, if, you know, if he does something with it, other than once a day, or anybody else, you know, there'll have to be an entry, not the whole law, you know, you're gonna be like, they'll have to be, uh, dead if they enter into that business.
Maybe go with it.
Maybe go with it, dreaming and all that. If that's, you know, if they put something there, you, you don't wanna think, uh, wouldn't that be a little better, one of his name?
Well, I'm fine with it the way it is now, I'll go ahead and tell you. I wish that none of this had happened, I, I, I also feel like this will make that land more valuable, because if he goes to sell it, I think if it's commercial, it makes it sell higher. You know, if it's residential, it's not. You know, I don't mean it bad, but I mean, I'm looking at the future, is what I'm looking at. I'm looking at my future, I live there, I don't plan on moving, you know? And I'm sure wherever you all live, y'all feel the same way I feel.
Some of that may be um, maybe changed just from the fact of uh, state right of it. You can't do that on the state right of it, not where that distance is down there, let's say six or seven, five feet. So all that'll have to be approved by the State Highway Department. Uh, Mr. Luxford, would you be, would you consider asking the State Highway Department to take a look at that? It's uh, traffic.
You need, you need to bring it back down a bit.
Traders, they kill somebody coming down that curve.
Yeah, I mean, it's really bad, I mean, it really is, I mean, Jimmy ain't got no control over that, I know that, but.
The commission to have now, to be standing to the exits, do I hear that?
Well, one of them, I mean, yours.
Yes, it is, you say.
I mean, that's what we even.
Yeah, you have to, I mean, if we can get the, get the record right. That's the last question, if not, thank you, thank her for her time.
Well, that's it, you know, I mean, I hope you all, I mean, I know you're gonna vote on this, and I figure your minds are already made up. But I mean, there is, uh, you know, the school buses run down there, there's, like I said, people live down there. You know, I mean, besides me, some of the government, they involve gates and this and that, which, which is more important, so I'm here. And, and like I said, this is nothing personal, I like Jimmy, it's nothing personal at all, but I'm worried about tomorrow. I don't care for him selling storage units over there, or whatever, but I do worry about other stores coming in, like a Dollar General, or this and that, which I don't think they can. I don't think that lot's big enough for something like that, but I don't know. You never know what's gonna happen from, from day to day. You know, so that's all I've got to say, and thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
No, we, we stand on the previous testimony that's been taken, that we certainly respect our neighbors. We also respect the testimony that's been given, the argument that's before you is, this is an equation. Does it meet, does it comply? And all the answers are yes. I- if, Mr. Thomas, if you can, show the uh, zoning. It, you know, I'm, I make arguments every day on behalf of my clients, it's my job. I make arguments sometimes that are, you know, less powerful than others. This is contiguous to the zone that we're asking for. Ultimately, if I would have been involved with my clients years ago, who did this, the, the maroon part there, that's, he also owns, if I would have been involved, and then this property would have already been zoned. This property didn't, does not have an address, or did not have an address, which is the reason why zoning popped up. Um, the comments, um, I'm always a little tender in, in this type of hearing to address comments of the public. So it, this, you all have heard plenty of it, I asked for a motion uh, to approve. Uh, I direct the, you to the second page, where we've given reasons based on the comprehensive plan, the, the use. Guys, this is a note writer, it just makes sense, it's continuing, well, it's already there. Thank you.
If you all have any further comments or concerns. If not, then I'll call for us.
I make a motion that we adopt the uh, zone change for four seventy-nine Mount Vernon Road, U C one to U C four, based on finding a fact that the visiting zoning classification is inappropriate based off the location and current use, and the U C four is being more fitting and appropriate for the property.
Okay, you have a motion to approve the request, is your second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
That's a motion and second, and thorough discussion. Not without a vote.
Very hard.
Yes.
Joe Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Will be Ken?
Yes.
Brian Adams?
Yes.
Joe Flavus? Yes. Robert Corr.
Yeah, can we, is it?
The common process.
Please, yes.
Everybody, Mr. Luxford, stretch your legs a little bit.
Let me say this, this is the identification of the industrial corporation, that we look at, that have been very tall. And I'm.
And you are.
I'm excited.
Absolutely. Yes. So, okay, that, uh, that tells it right now.
That was the one thing about that, and I'm like, one, my, we just, but.
Because, because he said he had an address.
That's correct.
Well, I wonder about this other thing, that here says two, one, two, one, what's the big?
But we probably don't need to discuss that right now on record with, for recess, and we're not being recorded, we'll, are we still recording, George?
I've got this one called, this is one that has Amy on it.
He's conferring with his client right now, so let's just, let you do that, and we'll discuss it if we need to.
But you have a little one.
Should say, very, with the sign, the sign was there, is there?
Well, uh, this air, I, I, I mean, I, I thought it, I assumed it was.
We didn't know it when he did it.
Okay, I didn't know if he told it.
Anyway. I agree on the thing over there, I agree a little bit like the way it goes.
I was thinking the thing.
But do you stop on that, and do this, what's like at their mark?
Yeah.
No, I love them happy for you, I love them good.
Yes, to your other question. All right, Mr. Chairman, we're ready if y'all are. Yeah, Mary Arthur.
Here.
Joe Friss.
Here.
Shannon Pennington.
Yeah, here.
Phil Clapp.
Yeah.
Brian Adams.
Yes.
Phil Clapp. Mr. Chairman, we need to amend the agenda again. The applicant requested to pull the next item from the agenda. Uh, actually, attorney, um, requested that we do that, so, um, that may or may not be brought back in future days if it is, um, to let you all know. So we'll move forward with the agenda.
Thank you all for all your consideration.
Please.
I may be excused.
Uh, Mr. Strais.
I will send you the, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, we've been, um, not having a plane open, uh, I wanted to let, uh, you, like, a few minutes. I know y'all all had a little packet, some legal paperwork from CAO, from our attorney. Um, just to talk a little bit about what's going on with that, answer your questions or concerns that you might have. And, um, just kind of talk a little bit about what's going on with that.
And, uh, nobody likes being seen. Uh, so, uh, this is my pack, my bag, a little bit, and my hood. Uh, CAO, uh, does cover the county, courts to the court, to, uh, I don't know, one of the cases, but it was the plant, we don't forget, on Lexington Road. That case, uh, after fiscal court adopted y'all's recommendations for, uh, zone change, um, laws. Not surprised. Uh, and that'll get lalled out at the court for you guys remain as well as. CAO covers fiscal court and also cover you. Uh, representing you. In almost every capacity, we write that packet, uh, most insurance, I don't think they sells insurance, but it's largely what, what don't we cover is what they wanna make sure, you know? Uh, I looked over that. Of course, we've, we've decided before in this situation. I don't, I can't conceive of any, uh, element of the complaint that's been filed that would not be covered by CAO's, uh, representation of you. If somebody here, for instance, had profited off of your decision, CAO won't cover you that. They won't cover you that. If, uh, you took some kind of malicious act, uh, per- personal vendetta into some of the parties that have filed this lawsuit, you might not be covered there. If you beaten one of the, one of these guys up, they wouldn't cover you for that, but, but the wrongful act of, uh, making the decision you guys made and made that recommendation, uh, if that is, is found to be a wrongful act, that's covered by CAO, uh, first with, uh, representation. They can provide a attorney as they did, uh, last, been a couple of years. We had, uh, I think Mr. Van Winkle out on Urban Road last when we had these.
We had College Hill.
College Hill, that's right. Uh, that'll be covered and there's also insurance coverage for, for damages, so. I can't imagine what we're gonna do in a case like this.
I'd like to just point out, uh, that we weren't suing our individual capacities.
We're not suing individual capacities. Name, 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 named individually, but not in your individual capacity.
I don't think that we have anything to worry about.
No.
But I do have a question. There's something in this complaint and then he brought it up that night and I, I just, you know, I did quiz him a little bit, and I wish I'd gone on with it. And it's a serious matter because it's something that, although it's not gonna affect us individually, but it affects planning zoning maybe all throughout the state. This concept that we have to order, uh, traffic study.
I'm saying for.
I.
If we have to order a traffic study, instead of, then, then planning zoning is wrong because, uh, it'd be like a, like a ball and chain. First of all, can't afford it.
No.
And secondly, it's like saying we can't depend on US twenty-five and US I seventy-five as being artery quarters. It'd be, it's.
I, I, I don't, I don't know any, any, any basis for, for that. I mean, you, you do have to make independent findings of fact.
Yes.
You have to be based on, on information that you, that you have.
It was worse than us.
You have to consider the traffic. You have to consider its effect on the, on the community and on the, you have to consider things like that. Those, those things are true, but him tagging on that you have to have an independent traffic study.
But that might, he's, he's, he made that affirmative statement.
He did.
But he ain't in the road, did he?
What's that?
That's not in the road.
I, I don't know any law anywhere that backs that up any case law, but, you know, I, I learn something new every day, but, uh, it would be, in my opinion, it would be groundbreaking and planning commissions all over the state.
If we don't, you know, if we require traffic studies, then we have to have, uh, studies for schools.
You, you could do that. You could do that.
Yeah, but look at the laws.
Do you know any planning commission municipal, I mean, I, maybe Jefferson County does, maybe Fayette County does.
I think that's more at the, that's more at the administrative level, like the Department of Transportation or State Highway Department or something that might.
That's the point. The transportation department, he doesn't have to allow this, anything on the road if they have a reason to stop.
I, I think, I think the legal basis that he will have, make whatever, I don't think he's got a winner, but, you know, that's not, not, not my business at this point. But I think the legal basis that he has to actually make that argument is you do have to make independent findings of fact. You can't just rely on what the petitioner says or what the opposition says, but you guys did that. You do have to consider those things. You guys did that. Him saying that a traffic study's required, there's no statutory basis for that. I've never seen a case.
Well, that's, that's scary, scary talk, I think.
Well, I don't.
Very comfortable that CAO's attorneys would be on top of something like that.
That's what they.
In their, in their response.
That's what, they, they, they've done a good job in, on the other two cases.
So we don't need to make a response to that.
Ca- CAO is representing you and, and you don't need too many cooks.
Yeah.
That's what I think.
The only thing we remember spoken to a state highway is they had to have interest committee okay by the state.
Sure.
And the, uh, the state has a tunnel, it needs to be turned around.
Well, and, and you guys, you guys could have taken, you know, there were, you know, just that, we're not talking about that casing work, cause your decision's been made. There were people who came in and said, there's, there's too much traffic and here's why. You guys could have taken their testimony and made a recommendation the other way and said, we're gonna deny this and the recommendation, one of the findings we make is there's too much traffic. Uh, he wouldn't be saying, you can't make that finding because you don't have a traffic study. So, so you could have done that. Nobody would have argued against that. You, you guys could, could take that information about traffic and make a decision based on that, based on the, the testimony that you hear from the witnesses and from Burt, you know, from the administrative staff.
And we have, and we've done that before.
Sure you have.
About six forty-seven, we said, wait, wait here, there's problem out there.
No.
One thing that bothered me about working for the state highway, and I'm glad the judge brought this up, because it reminded me is when we had to frame Waco and we had the state highway department supervisor stand up and say that, yeah, there's traffic, too much traffic and dangerous, we're gonna do something. That's what, uh, I bring up the door. Open door for his ability. He's actually somebody.
Point on the judge.
No, that's like a, I mean, you're that so hoary, but if we break on the state's fixtures, you know, they go by death, smash things.
That is top of the.
Which is ridiculous, but.
Top of the first tier, they're coming.
Well, the other thing is tonight, we need to make sure that we get any calls other than from you or Burt or like that, uh, we need to refer them to you.
Sure, yeah, and, uh.
For our, you or our house or just CAO or what would it?
For. Well, I need you to get older and I'll, and I'll be ready. Uh, if, if, if he wins on that basis and there's, there's a court of appeal somewhere that says that, uh, that, that the planning commission hasn't got all these independent studies, Burt's office is gonna be just.
Is he still not saying that he did something illegal or is he?
No, he's, he's saying that, he's just saying that he doesn't agree with your decision. And he has to have a legal basis for that. The legal basis is, it, it, you didn't consider all the things you should have considered. You know, uh, he got, I don't wanna get into this.
But he was, that night, he acted like he was the expert.
Oh, yeah. He was a very good drama guy.
All right, you clean all that. Mr. Chairman, that's all I got. Mary Arthur. Joe Friss. Shannon Pennington. Phil Clapp. Brian Adams.
Yes.
Phil Clapp.
Yes.
Frank Farm.
Yes.
Brian, welcome aboard.
That's an easy one, man.
Balls with three shots. You know.